So that they can make good and wise decisions. Thank you, Father, for all that you do for us and let us not take for granted your watch here over us in Christ's name again.
Amen.
Yeah. All right. I'd like to recognize someone in the crowd, Mark Flanagan. Mark, would you come up? Mark's with Emergency Equipment Professionals, and I think they're the ones that maybe help us whenever we order or buy or build a fire truck. Some part of that y'all do, or maybe all of it. Would tell us what...
Well, not all of them.
Because we just got a new fire truck this morning.
I'll try to address the entire group.
We delivered Pele Hatch's truck today. I just, I wanted to come in and say thank you to the board, to the community, from Emergency Equipment Professionals. I am the territory manager, dealer rep for Pierce. We thank you for the partnership. We are the only Mississippi company that sells fire trucks. There are other companies, but we're the only one that's actually located in the state. I'm a longtime fire chief, firefighter. I retired from the city of Tupelo, started doing this about 10 years ago. And I also want to kind of toot your EOC and your fire coordinators' horn a little bit. These guys do a phenomenal job of being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Rankin County is blessed. I live in Lee County. I would say we're blessed as well, but we're not even in your league. Don't send that back to Lee County, they may want to fire me.
I don't know if they got the recorder working or not.
These guys do a phenomenal job of reviewing specifications. They don't just take low bid or just order a truck. They review the specs, they make sure that the components that are on the trucks are quality, and they also make sure that it's competitive with state contract. Everybody's there, we're all competitive, but they want to make sure that you're getting your value, the money, your money's worth. And they do a phenomenal job of that. As a retired fire chief and having to do the same thing for the city, you know, it's a pleasure dealing with people that actually do their job. And these guys do an awesome job. So just say thank you. We appreciate the business and appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
We appreciate the service you've been giving us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's call to order our planning commission. First thing we have here, what, consideration approval February 28 minutes?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Bob. Say, this is going to be pretty consistent throughout the debate. Motion by Bob, second by Jared, all in favor? Any opposed? It passes. All right. Old business, any old business?
There is no old business.
All right, so I don't think we need a motion or anything on that. New considerations?
All right, the only item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Debbie Dur on Hidden Ranch Road. Hidden Ranch is off of White Road, and this property is located at the very end of Hidden Ranch Road. Ms. Dur is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2019 28 by 56 manufactured home on the property. It's a 36.90 acre parcel of family land. It's zoned RE1A. That's an aerial view of the property. There are two other homes on this property. This is her site plan. Her home will be going here. This is a view of that property where the mobile home will be placed, and then these are surrounding properties in that area. This is a home that was approved in the last month or so. It's been moved in, but it looks like the weather has caused them some issues there. That's it.
How close is it to this one? I mean, it's off, not right up?
It's not right.
Hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Probably a hundred and fifty feet, maybe.
But this is not on the same property, though?
It is on the same property with that.
But she moving another one on the same property?
Yes, sir, there's two other homes on the property now. It's 36.90 acres total where it's going.
And this is for the family living?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That's not a problem with it being multiple down there now?
Well, I mean, that's why she's asking for the conditional use. Those are looked at on a site-by-site basis, just to see if...
I'd say this will probably be the last one.
Okay.
Wouldn't you think?
That'll be fine, yes, sir. It can be.
Well, I mean, and the only reason I say that, I was...
You know, this is the very end of that road. They call that a...
Yeah, I know where it is, yeah. Because I got approached about something else this morning, and it just opens, not on this road, somewhere else, but it just kind of opens that door.
All right.
Okay.
So we need to set the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, set the public hearing.
Second.
All right, Jared makes a motion, sets a hearing. Bob seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. I could ask any further discussion, but both of y'all are the ones that made the motion and seconded. All right, let's see, we're going to site plan architectural review.
All right, this is for First Baptist Church of Fannin at 101 Church Road. That property is located on the corner of Highway 471 and Church Road. The church is proposing construction of a new church sanctuary. They own six parcels that total 20.31 acres. The property is zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. You can see the existing church, kind of spread out here. This is their site plan. The church, the new sanctuary, is going to be in addition. It's 44,593 square feet. It's shown here. It'll attach to the, tie into the existing church here. That's the existing church, a portion of it that they show there. The building has varying heights. The tallest portion of the building on the east side is 38 feet 6 inches. The zoning ordinance sets the maximum height at 35 feet unless a greater height is approved by the board during the site plan review. These are renderings of the church. Exterior of the building is brick. The addition will be sprinkled. And Mr. Parker has reviewed the drainage plans. He's requested some additional information. So if y'all approve the site plan today, we would need to do it contingent upon the county engineers' approval of those plans. This is a view of the existing church. You know, that addition will be out in this old parking area here.
I think that's the back of that church, really. That's not what you see from the road.
Or the side.
That's a parking lot.
Sir, can I put these in my tox rolls?
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Bob to approve, second by Jared, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's move on to nuisance property hearings.
First item under nuisance considerations is the continuation of the Viorli-Johnson nuisance property at 192 Floyd Street in District 1. We will reopen that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate for us.
All right, so we don't have any new pictures here. There hasn't been any change. It was continued to today, so we have it back on the agenda to see what the board might want to do.
Is Ms. Johnson here?
No.
Viorli? Okay. Then at this time, we'll close that public hearing. It'll be appropriate to take action.
Yeah, we can, we've done all we can do, so.
You want to declare it, Jared? Just declare it and move it on?
Yeah, I don't know anything else to do.
Second. All right. Got a motion by Jared to declare the nuisance, second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to send it to J.C.
That's correct. The next item is the Mary Steenhouse nuisance property, 369 Coventry Court. This is District 2. This time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate here for us.
All right, so these pictures were taken March 1st. This is a property, it's in Castlewood subdivision. We've received numerous complaints on it through the years. Most recently, we've gotten some emails from some neighbors and others, you know, complaining about the condition of the property. These pictures, like I said, were taken March the 1st. And then these new pictures were taken on Tuesday.
Seems like we've seen this one several years ago.
We did.
Had an inoperable vehicle that was parked on the street, if I recall.
And this same time, she still did. There were some inoperable vehicles there, but she hasn't removed the vehicles now. They're gone. But the other, you know, part of the property is still in disarray.
I make a motion to declare further pieces.
Second.
All right. Do you want to have...
Yeah, if I can, is Ms. Steenhouse here?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward. If you have anything to address to the board, it would be, now would be the time.
Okay.
Come forward and speak here so we can get you on video.
All right. If someone would come out and take pictures, they will notice that all of this clutter has been removed. Every bit of it. In front of the garage is gone. It was not my property and didn't have a right to destroy it, so I told the people, "Come get it or I destroy it." And it's all gone. And I called Monday to check with the member of the board, and I said, "If you'll come out and see the house that it's all been cleaned up." And this had only been there like six or eight months, so I didn't have pictures to bring because my cellphone's broken. But I'm a widower now because my husband died last year, so I had to go out and clean it all up by myself. I take care of a three-year-old baby, and if anybody wants to know what that's like, you need to try it. But it's all cleaned up now, and I'd like for somebody to come out and inspect it and show you the...
These pictures were taken Tuesday.
Ma'am?
These pictures were taken on Tuesday. You said you called...
No, ma'am, I cleaned it up Tuesday. This is when I hired a man to come help me.
Okay.
Tuesday afternoon, he came and cut the grass and helped me remove all of this.
Okay.
And I did call and ask somebody to come out and inspect it and tell me what else they wanted me to do to improve it.
You know who you talked to?
Sir?
You know who you talked to?
No, ma'am, I talked to someone that was on the letter that was sent to me.
Oh, okay. I don't know, I just...
I'll tell you what, I...
I didn't get word that...
We got a motion and a second. I would like maybe amend, if Bob would consider amending that motion before we vote. Can we go ahead and consider the nuisance and give them some time to go out and meet with her, to where we don't have to come back in here?
Right, right.
And that way, if it doesn't work out, we don't have time at this office.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
That's what I asked for, sir. Could somebody come out and inspect it and tell me what else they want me to do?
That's what they're going to do.
We're going, he's got a motion that was to just declare the nuisance property. He's amending that motion to have this office come out and meet with you, and if it passes everything, then it comes off. If it don't, it continues forward, and you'd have to deal with another office after that. But hopefully, it'll pass.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to...
Second.
Consider this nuisance, work with the, with community development to get it taken care of, and we have a second by Jared, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
No.
All right.
I called the office Monday and asked them to come out, and they returned my call.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob to adjourn, to make a second.
No, it's a...
Second by Jared, all in favor?
My cellphone's broken. I took it to the shop yesterday to take pictures. It's broken.
I'm calling to order the meeting of Rain County Board of Supervisors. We start off with public comments, but we have a public comment going on up front right now, so we'll wait a second.
I don't...
Carl, you be on go.
Just be planning it, Carl. Bob's got to get out of here at 11:00. I mean, if he leaves, we all got to leave. So we got to be finished.
He's an important player right now.
Good morning. Just give you a brief status update to where we're at on everything.
Yes, ma'am, if you will, just call and give us the number to get in touch.
Read material.
Yeah. Now, I'll go through this briefly. We're actually...
Oh, I like that bottom line.
Well, actually, it's gone down, bottom line, since last time.
I love the way you started that, it's gone down.
Yeah, the courthouse is, right now, over budget by that, but that's the dirt on both projects, actually.
Okay.
And actually, we've gotten, that's gone down $40,000 since what you approved several months ago on that. Did add two metal detectors, which were not in the original budget. So that's where we stand on the courthouse. And if you flip to the second page, Mr. Mainer is much better. It's in the black.
You might have started it first.
Well, I know. Tell you the truth. But it's in the black, and a couple of things I'll discuss about it today. The remaining, the bottom line is, we're still in the black about $300,000 on the remaining bond balance at this date. So we're still in, still in good shape so far, and I don't anticipate anything major coming up. But that's where we're at, as far as the cost. As far as progress, that hasn't changed a whole lot. They're still anticipating completing the courthouse at the end of July, and the Mr. Mainer, actually, beginning of June, end of May, is where they're telling me. But, you know, all that depends on weather. Now, we're available, and I've already taken a couple of judges through the courthouse a few weeks ago. We're available to give the board a tour, and I think y'all may have gotten a couple of dates there. I think there was a request for maybe next week. I don't know if y'all have looked at that or not, or really, I'm available anytime board members want to walk through there and kind of go through, look at it, and see where it's at. It's about 60% complete. Mr. Mainer's about 75%, 70, 75% complete.
About after Monday's meeting, for those that want to do a walk through, schedule for bid?
We can do that.
I'm good.
I would, I would like to do a walk through between both buildings.
Okay. We can do, yeah, we can do all, all the buildings, both, both buildings, actually. So we'll be glad to do that. The other, the other items, I think, on my list of to-do is Chancery renovation. We're just kind of on hold right now, waiting on the board to decide if you want to move forward with that. We've done some preliminary concept plans on the first floor. We have not looked at the bottom floor at all, but I think, as was noted last time, there is an open space, Judge Grant's courtroom, which we weren't really doing anything with last time. I think we were carving out a little space for break room, but the only, the only other department that needs to be looked at is the Election Commission. And I think our estimate last time upstairs was like $500,000 to $600,000. But that, I don't think that would go up. I actually think it may go down. We just hadn't had the chance to get in there and do detailed study of it. We've just worked off existing plans and visual observations. But that's where we stand on it. The other item that we kind of discussed last time was this, they found some old bad dirt at the misdemeanor access drive. However, I was over there this morning, and it's just, you know, it's pretty solid right now. And I think the decision was made to let them keep working on it, see what happens. There were a couple options. One was to take out the redoing of that pavement and reworking it. There was about a $19,000 credit to do that. Then the county would be responsible for doing it. The other option was to go back and fix it the way the dirt people recommended, and that was an add of like $60,000. Third option was just leave it in the contract and let the contractor move forward with it. And I think that's kind of where we're leaning toward right now. I think, Mr. Parker, Tim, you have any, that's basically what you're looking at, just watching to see how it develops, or?
Yeah, I think based on the last discussion and whatever meeting that was, and Mike and I looked at it too, was let the contractor proceed, we're building the program plan, don't worry about what's hidden from the deal. And when we get to the top, if they can't, they were worried about the potential of not being able to get ready for proof roll. Well, at the point that we get ready for proof roll, at that point, we'll address it if they can't get there. If they can, we'll proof roll it and go on about our business. So that was what I took from the last meeting, and that's kind of been the direction I think they...
So that's kind of where we're at, and I've, I've talked to Johnny Jones about the re-roofing. We're going to get together next week and just been trying to work around Rain and look at those roofs and see what's needed there. But that's kind of where we're at today. I, the only real decision, I guess, I'm waiting on is, and it's up to the board to decide, timing is, if you want us to move forward with the Chancery building renovation or just stay on hold. That's where we're at right now.
What is that timeline, Carl? If we say, when everybody's here on Monday, we all agree to move forward, it was okay, you've got the green light. How much time before we get to a, to a bid process, and then...
Probably a couple of months to finish the drawings and then be able to build it. And then bid takes 30 days, and then renovate it would be four months or so, maybe, maybe less. I, I don't think there's, the courthouse won't be finished till the end of July, so I think the timing on that, they can't do really anything till then anyhow. So we, because they'll need to move out of that. So that's, that's where we're at. So the timing's not too bad, really.
And weather won't, won't be...
No, it won't affect, it won't affect it. And the reason why I say there may be, the cost actually may go down, I know like the carpet in Carter seems to be in really good shape. I don't see any need to, we're not really doing anything to the main hallway, other than maybe painting the walls. And as I go forward, I can give you a little more details on it. We've, we've tried to use existing walls where we could. The biggest thing had to do with community development because we just, we're using that big courtroom on the east side, using most of that office space. And then we're reusing the existing high-density shelving in there. That's going to work out for storage and files. So it's really, but we did have to remove some walls around in the 911 dressing and a couple of other spaces where we were upgrading the restaurants, the public restaurants, to make sure they meet ADA, those type of things. It's really more of a cosmetic for the most part, and, and we're going to have to redo some electrical and lighting, but the basic HVAC is going to remain, other than reworking a few ducts, or if we find some more. That's what we don't know. I've talked to Johnny about, I know one of those units has been replaced, a couple of other things, but we need to verify. The roof is in pretty good shape, according to Johnny, so the building systems, we're not really going back and replacing. That would be much more costly if we had to do that.
Can y'all think of any reason why we can't give him the green light this morning on the plans and the drawings?
I would think they could proceed in this way, but they won't get behind, and we won't have to hurry it in June trying to run fast.
I can't, it's got to be done.
Yeah, I mean, we know.
It just comes down to whether y'all feel like all five of you need to be in on it or not.
I think us three are solid on it. I mean, I think the other two, they hadn't said anything to me about having issues with, you know, moving forward on this. I would say you're good to go ahead and...
I don't know. Do you need a motion or a vote? Yes, sir. A motion to add the item to the agenda. I'll make a motion, we add the item to the agenda, so it gives, J. H. generates the permission to move forward with plans and construction specs, whatever reverberage you need. Now, they basically add that to the agenda.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Bob, put it on agenda, second by myself, all in favor? Any opposed? It's on there now.
Make a motion to approve that, that motion.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Do y'all have any other questions about anything?
Roof, you said you're reading forward on figuring out whether or not we need any roofing.
Yeah, we're going to look at, I'm going to meet with Johnny on both of those buildings, DHS and the EOC, I think, both. The DHS looks like a simple fix. It's just a single slope goes back, and it looks like it won't be much. But Johnny's telling me, and I hadn't looked at, I hadn't, not familiar with the EOC, he says it's got three different types of roofs on it, and so that's probably why there's leaks there. But I'll get with him next week, we're going to get up on it, and I'll get my roofing guy to be with us. And I'll make plans to be here after the meeting Monday, unless I hear differently.
Mr. President, if I may, while Carl's here, just sort of wrap this up so we can get word out to you guys. There's really three dates that y'all could do your tour of the new facilities. Monday after the board meeting seems to be probably one of the best options, but also available is Wednesday afternoon, which is April the 3rd, or Friday morning, April the 5th.
I'd rather do it while we're here, that day.
Sorry to y'all, let's just say that the tour will proceed after the board meeting on Monday, right?
Right.
So whenever it concludes, that'll be available. Y'all may want to go eat lunch, depending on when we end.
Yep.
We may just say, let's just say 1:30.
Okay.
1:00 or 1:30 on Monday afternoon.
Well, we'll sit down.
And we'll just make sure that the other two guys are aware.
Huh?
Yeah, I think whatever, I mean, just, you know, it could, we wrap up at 12 o'clock Monday morning, too, so, you know, you never know.
Well, I'll, I'll be available.
What? Yeah. Why can't we just, yeah, we don't have to set it 1:00, whatever we're through at 10:30?
Yeah, whatever we're going to be.
We can be on through it then.
Go that far?
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, if somebody can just note, I mean, maybe by cell, and I'd be here.
Okay.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Bridgette, it's all you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just discussing this morning, the lawn maintenance RFP. It expires May 15th. I was planning to go out for proposals this year. We did the initial contract right now in May of 2016. It was 24 months, and we extended it without, we had the option to extend it last year.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just letting you know what was going on with that. We are taking off, we're using the same, all the same properties, with the exception, the sheriff is going to be handling the building that was the human services building behind Rogers Dabs on, on Highway 80. And also, Mike Word is going to be maintaining the siren sites and the tower sites now. Those will be removed.
So he's going to maintain them?
Isn't that what you're saying?
Yes, I see no need to keep it in there. Since I took this position, I've given the guy keys to two different occasions to get into the tower sites. He claims he's cutting, he's probably has been in there once or twice. I don't know how many, what the frequency is, but it's not enough to satisfy me, because we got our motor public coming through and seeing it, and it looked atrocious. The sirens, from what I've been told, they have never been cut around since, ever. So might as well take that out, too. We've been, we cut it all last year. Matter of fact, the guys are out there spraying right now. I see no need to continue to pay, to pay for that portion of it.
That's fine.
If we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah, okay.
We had to do it last year because we couldn't get him to do it to satisfy us.
Right.
So... What about, what about the new maintenance facility? Is it on there? It need to be on there?
It is.
You can do that one?
We may have to do an addendum later on for the new building. We just, it's just time to go out for proposals again, but we were probably the new courthouse and maybe, I don't know if the sheriff...
We've got a lot of mowers ourselves to do, so we're, we're making sure it gets...
What about that? What about the existing maintenance facility? Are we going, what are we going to do about it?
It's not on the list now.
It's already on there or not?
It's not.
It's not. It's ninety-nine percent gravel. I mean, we'll still be-
Weed eating, weed eating around the ditches and stuff like that?
We're just spraying weed eaters like we're all with, uh, the car.
Mr. Harris is big racist enough to let us use one of his big mowers he's got, and that's what we've been using. I've got some weed eaters and stuff, so we've been actually using his mowers to cut all that stuff.
Alright. Alright.
I make a motion, we, we do that? Is that what you want, Ms. Bridget, motion?
I don't-
I, I just, that's, we need a motion, it was just-
Do a motion to go out RFP for lawn maintenance services.
Yeah, second.
Alright.
Yeah, we have, you, you don't have potential action you want to, to make a difference?
No, sir, we're gonna use this, we're gonna use this agenda item, and, uh, I'll make that motion, issue the lawn maintenance RFP.
Alright, Bob's made a motion for RFP on the maintenance, lawn maintenance, and, uh, Jared seconded it. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, uh, under my section is a discussion and potential, uh, action on the Oak Grove Drainage Improvement Contract Matter. Uh, we, uh, gave you guys a good bit of, uh, information on the front end so that you would be prepped for this discussion. Uh, in essence, uh, and, and briefly, uh, to recap how we got here. We had a contract, uh, that was in default on the Oak Grove Drainage Improvement Project. This is in Jay's district, Oak Grove subdivision. That, uh, that contractor was terminated. Uh, the bonding company for the project was notified and was, uh, given instructions to take over the responsibility for completion of the project. Uh, we entered into a series of discussions with the bonding company, who, I wanna say, on the record, uh, for everybody's purposes, that I have been very pleased with the response that we have gotten from the bonding company. Um, I feel like it's appropriate to mention that. Um, and I also wanna point out that if they had not been handling the matter in what we believe to be, uh, due speed and due course, I don't know that we would have ever known the difference, because we simply don't have contracts, uh, public improvement contracts in Rankin County that go into default.
Right.
This is, this is the first time, and to my knowledge, that we have had a, what I'll call a, a road and/or drainage infrastructure type of contract go into default. We've had some small contracts on building renovations go into default, but never one of this magnitude. And so, um, I, it's, we're fortunate that we don't have to deal with this very often. And so our exposure to how bonding companies will respond and react to the call of a bond is somewhat limited. But, uh, my impression here is that the turnaround time that we are now facing today has been, uh, very, very quick. Um, so they were notified about thirty-five days ago, and we stand here today. Uh, the bonding company was notified about thirty-five days ago, and we stand here today on the precipice of, uh, of a resolution that I wanna present to you. This bonding company has gone out for bid on, with four different local contractors, all of whom we're familiar with. All of whom, uh, we would be satisfied, uh, doing the completion of the project. And they have selected as the lowest and best bid Hemp Hill Construction to complete the project. Uh, the math works like this. Uh, the total project was one point four nine five million dollars. Uh, of that amount, we were in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars remaining uh, in, in, in the county's hands unpaid to the, uh, to the original contractor in that neighborhood. Uh, some line items in the contract, uh, were removed from the contract at the time we tendered the completion to the bonding company, and that reduced down the amount, uh, of the total project by some hundred and thirty to hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so the math works like this. The bonding company is offering to resolve this claim by issuing a check to Rankin County for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Tendering to us, the contractor, who was the low bid, Hemp Hill. Total completion is seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So if you add the two twenty-five plus what we have remaining under the contract, we will come out, the, the county will come out, in essence, only spending about forty-eight thousand dollars more, uh, with Hemp Hill than we would have if the original contractor had completed the work that is now left to be completed. And I wanted to point that out. The work that is now left to be completed is not the same work under the original contract. I want y'all to understand that. Okay, so that's why the math is a little fuzzy, alright? So we reduce the contract down.
We, we took out some, one street or something.
Took out line items. That's correct. And help me with the street. Chestnut? Right. So we removed, I, it's less than a quarter mile, isn't it? It's probably a thousand feet of- Okay, so it's even, it's, it's a very small segment of the total contract. That, that of course would reduce the global cost of this project. Does that make sense? It's not money we're losing, it's just money we're not spending. Okay? So to complete the work, for Hemp Hill to complete the work, with the funds that the bonding company is tendering to us, to us, the cash settlement part of this, add all that together, and we come out about forty-eight grand below where we would have been. In other words, a, a good result under the circumstances. Nobody wants to spend more than we started with. But to be honest with you guys, when we started down this road, at the point of termination, when we were back in December, looking at the mess that we had out there and what these people were suffering with, all I was seeing was big dollar signs.
Me too.
I, I was just very, very concerned, uh, about what we were gonna ultimately end up with. Thankfully, we have the protection of the bond, thankfully. One of the aspect of the resolution is this, we are not resolving the payment bond portion of the original contract. Which means that any subcontractors, of whom we know at least two, that have not been paid for their work by the original contractor, the payment bond portion is still on the hook. In other words, they can make claims. They don't make claims against the county, they don't impress liens against the county, they can't do that under Mississippi law anyway. But nonetheless, we're not gonna be dealing with unpaid subcontractors of the original contract. We know that there's two, there's probably more. Okay? So the, the surety is still on the hook for dealing with unpaid subs of the original contractor. So what I'm asking you guys to consider today, um, and I believe that Mr. Bishop has indicated that he would like for this to be the resolution, would be to approve the settlement with the performance bond company. Authorize the president to execute any and all documents associated with that settlement and move forward, uh, with the completion of the project as soon as we can.
When, how soon will that, can the chosen contractor proceed?
The, uh-
What's the process?
Yes, sir. So, uh, you'll have to forgive me, but in anticipation that, that this would be, that, that the position of the board would be to resolve this claim, uh, we have already asked our consulting engineer to move swiftly with the preparation of the contract itself. My understanding is that that may already be done. Uh, and so conversations have already taken place at the engineer level between, uh, Mr. Parker, actually Chris Bass, and Hemp Hill's people. Uh, and so we believe that we can move that process pretty quickly.
Realize the payment par- portion of the bond is still in place. With the settlement check, are, are we letting the bonding company off the work, off the hook for the performance? Ensuring that Hemp Hill will get the job done?
Yes, sir.
Or what?
That's correct. So they're, essentially what they're doing is, they are, uh, paying the county to accept the responsibility to oversee the work. That's why we would, are gonna have a contract between Rankin County and Hemp Hill to complete the work. With a scope of work.
They had to have a bond too, didn't they?
That's correct.
I mean, they bonded also.
They're correct. That is correct. We're not without protection there. We don't feel like we're gonna have to have it.
Right, but I mean, all contractors had to have a bond.
That's correct.
To, to both this.
Both a payment bond and a performance bond.
Right.
So when I, when I talk about the payment bond still being on the hook, that is for work that was being undertaken by JWB Construction, the prior contractor. Okay, so you, you got two different things going on here. Prior work, work to be done.
Right.
Okay, so-
All, all you're doing, allowing the, the existing bonding company a way out, basically, pay their way out.
Essentially, they are buying their way out of having to oversee the completion of this project.
Right.
And, um, the stability for us, or the certainty for us, I would say, is that our secondary contractor here, Hemp Hill, has tendered a bid for the work, and they will be under contract to complete for that amount.
Right.
What about that check we issued?
Eighty-one thousand? We, we never issued it.
We never issued it.
But we may have, I mean, I, I don't know what, the final decision, but we were holding.
So, um-
My opinion.
If, if I may suggest-
I wasn't gonna bring it up.
That would be, um, that would be proper, and we do have an executive session, and because there is likely to be litigation over that particular payment and potentially others, I, I'm not comfortable discussing the, the, the realities there. I, I'd like for us to be an executive to talk about it.
I'll go ahead and make a motion on Mr. Bishop's half, much as it gives me an adjustment to do so, um, to move forward with Oak Grove settlement.
Second. Alright, motion by Bob to accept this, I second it, uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes.
Better hope not.
I think we're in, I mean, this is the best that I could have seen us coming out of this a month ago.
Oh, I think, yeah.
Uh, we've got a great contractor and, uh, we've got the money back to do, to finish it.
I think we dodged some real problems.
Yeah.
This, this would have been a pipe dream. I'd, I would have told you, don't ever count on anything like this sort of result happening.
No.
Wait, let me say also for the record on Mr. Bishop's behalf, um, I, I'm grateful that we have a contractor like Hemp Hill who will, who has already begun the process of, um, helping us to better understand the dynamics out there in this subdivision. These people have been through misery untold, and so we're, we're thankful that there's gonna be an opportunity to leave a much better taste in the mouths of those folks out there who have suffered under this situation. I think it bears pointing that out publicly. We get it, we understand, we're thankful that we're able, able to move quickly, and we're hopeful that we're gonna get this resolved.
I feel sure you will.
Okay.
Thank you. This is Wanda Martin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item is authority for Butler Snow to file the continuing disclosure statement for the fiscal year ending September two thousand eighteen in the amount of three thousand dollars and requesting authority to issue that check, please.
Second. Alright, uh, Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion passes.
And then we have our agenda for April first. If you have any questions, we have that ready.
I'm good with it, Mr. President. I have a question, but it's more related to the actual issue, about what's on the agenda. But I'm good.
Jared, you alright?
I'm good with, yeah, I'm with you on that.
Alright, well, I don't think that, we don't have to do a motion or anything on that.
No.
Alright, we're good. Additional business to be discussed? Any?
Well, I had something, but I may wanna, I don't know if I wanna do it. Now I may wanna wait, we got more members here. I was, did not expect it to be this short.
Well, you wanna do it Monday?
That's fine.
Alright. Alright, uh, no more additional business discussed. Move on, uh, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, sir, we got, we got a litigation matter, uh, that we need to talk to the board about, and obviously one has surfaced.
I make a motion to, to discuss the need for executive session.
Second.
Alright, Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds it for, uh, executive session, all in favor? Any opposed? Done.
I make a motion to go into the second session to move for delegations.